...to order, this is a work session of the Oregon City Commission. Today is Tuesday, May the 12th. And around the table we have...
Jim Nacita, Commissioner.
Derek Newley.
Daphne West, Commission President.
Chris Story, Clackamas County Council.
Lynn Peterson, Chair of the County Commission.
And Mike Kinsey, the Director of Water Environment Services.
Larry Patterson, City Manager.
Rocky Smith, City Commissioner.
Okay, Dan, go ahead.
Dan Rockland.
Scott Archer, Community Services Director.
Jim Lefley, Human Resources Director.
Mike Conrad, Oregon City Police Chief.
Terry Bankhead, City Manager's Office.
Nancy Ives, City Recorder.
Keith Walter, Planning.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's get going. And we have a very meaty agenda this evening. And first of all, though, does anyone have future agenda? I have to add at this time...
Not specifically for the coming ones, but I would like, before the beginning of the year, to have a serious discussion about what we can do in terms of both water conservation and waste and stormwater issues that we have here. How, and perhaps it's a case of a billing process in terms of conservation, but we're getting these tremendous withdrawals from the Clackamas are just going to continuously increase, and we've got them up with something, perhaps on a municipal basis, but it's one that I think we need to address. And I'd like to address it probably over a series of work sessions before the next year.
Are you talking about issues with South Park Water Board as well?
Well, it would, but we bill for the water usage. I mean, so it comes through us. The answer is yes, but whether we have a consumption rate or what, we are the ones that charge the water rates.
So is this a rate issue? I'm not...
I think we have to have a broad discussion about how we handle water conservation in the city. Rate may be a component of that discussion. Also, we had a case where Tri-Cities did a smoke test in the older neighborhoods in terms of where the water off the roofs went to into sewer systems and so forth. I don't know we've ever used that information for any purpose at all.
Okay.
We've got a bunch of stuff we can move forward. I don't know what you want to go.
I told you South Park Water Board, too, and they've done some work on rate-based incentive programs for conservation, so maybe that would be a good piece of it. Anything else? All right, let's move into the first discussion item, and it's our pleasure to welcome four people from Clackamas County Waste Water Services. And I don't know who's going to lead off, but welcome, Lynn. It's great to have you here. Lynn and I, and a number of others, sat through many painful evenings looking to work on the regional solution for wastewater. And we're happy to say that we did come to a series of agreements, and it wasn't without its struggle and painful discussions, but there was an air... Lynn really set a wonderful tone of cooperation and the county wishing to take this step together. Finally, we got, I think, agreement on the numbers, which was always controversial from the beginning. And as you all know, Tri-City is a really important part of that solution. So tonight, it's another historic moment, which we're going to look at signing an IGA. So you want to take it over?
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having us here tonight. One of the things that I think we do need to demarcate this point in time is that we just want to thank you, as the city, for a couple of things. One, you do host the Tri-City Treatment Plant on your waterfront, and we know that that's a difficult thing to do. Having been mayor, and like us, we go with one on our waterfront that we didn't control either. I know that, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into that partnership.
We do recognize her here.
We're just trying to underscore major points.
Yes, and my next statement will be trumpets. I think that the... So we've got that partnership that we've been working on for quite a long time, and with the Phase 1 improvements that we've been working on to move some of the download Kellogg in Clackamas County Sewer District Number 1 into enhanced capacity down at Tri-City, that has taken a lot of partnership, and we appreciate all the land use, planning and permitting, and everything that you have done to help us expedite that, because, as you know, we were looking at moratoriums if we didn't get going with significant changes in how we manage wastewater, which then led into the conversation about how do we, once we have that joint asset, work together between the two districts? And that's really why we're here today, is how do we, going into the future, manage that joint asset at Tri-City since now Clackamas County Sewer District 1 now has an investment at Tri-City? So with the work that's been going on, there are a lot of things that we have heard, and we're going to be moving on, and I just thought I'd point those out before we get into the actual presentation. But one is that the City of Oregon City definitely wants us to continue moving in the direction of sustainability when it comes to any increased work at the plant, and trying to figure out... In fact, Jim and I were just talking earlier about how to deal with the future of the Cove, and is there any partnership in terms of future development and how the sewer plant relates to the Cove and water and maybe even electrical use sometime in the future through the methane that's produced, the methane... Electricity is produced from the methane at the plant.
But not incinerated.
But not incinerated. Very key point. But so that's the first thing, is the sustainability and how we deal with that. The second one really, and now my mind went blank on, oh, is the urban service delivery and how Clackamas County, who oversees these two sewer districts, really makes sure that we are in partnership with our cities in growing the region, and that we aren't providing sewer beyond where the cities are ready to actually provide other services. So we're going to be working, continually working on those two things as we move forward, as well as some of the other issues that have come up. But those are really the two Oregon City issues that, and if I've missed any...
You have.
Which one?
We'll get to on that.
Well, you missed the biggest one that we talked about early on, and that is impact fee. And we talked, we originally, during the Clearwater process, had talked about that as, I think it was, as opposed to fee. I like to call it an impact fee. And we dropped that because there didn't appear to be the political will to move in that direction, because it opened up fees for many other partners as well. But I think we still strongly believe that some kind of mitigation for having this on a plant... I mean, I think the part that was so painful for me, going to meeting after meeting, is that Kellogg or Milwaukee gets to have theirs off their waterfront someday. Like us, we go, likely, we'll get theirs off their waterfront someday.
Someday.
And ours is here to stay. In prime, developable land of some type.
Yeah.
So that as we developed an entire list of the ways that the county and the city work together, since we're housed in the same place in the plant as well, mitigation, I think, for that can happen in a number of ways. And we have a long list, I think, of things that we would like to talk with you about as we go forward. But I'd like that piece not to be forgotten, because I think that's an extremely important piece, because we didn't say no. We said, "Yeah, sure." I mean, we didn't say, "Yeah, sure." We said...
I might have said it.
But it's, I think, I think those are the two issues that we need to work on, the three issues that are really important to us. The greenness of the plant, because it is an urban plant now, and the urbanization issues that affect our ability for people to want to even annex, we had urbanization outside the borders. And then, thirdly, mitigation for saying yes.
Yeah.
And the impacts that we have because of the plant.
Well, just before we get into it, and I'll turn it over to Mike, I also appreciate all the time and energy and resources that you gave to this committee through your city manager and also your mayor's time, because this was an intense process, and he enjoyed every minute of it.
Mm-hmm.
Say yes, Larry.
And everyone enjoyed me coming.
And we did, yes, every moment. So with that, thank you for putting the time and energy into it, because it really, I think, in the end, is going to have a big impact in the future in how we collectively manage sewer throughout the entire region and the health impacts and the benefits to Clackamas River and the Willamette River. So thank you. With that...
Okay. Let me take it from there, and actually, if I could, Mayor Norris, let me just kind of follow up on what you said. I think the power of looking at future investment here in the treatment plant systems as two districts together or five or six partners really helps us go forward and look at some sustainability projects and incorporate technology that we could not afford to do as individual districts, just purely because of the cost of that. So it will afford us some opportunities here. In fact, Scott Burgess just brought that up when we were at West Lynn, and there's no question that over the next couple of years, as we go forward with strategic planning process, looking at the system as a whole, not as two separate districts, we're going to have a chance to explore that and also see and make some decisions in terms of what the costs are for moving forward with a lot of those green technologies, so...
Can you give an example, or a couple of examples?
Yeah.
This is like economies of scale that...
Yeah, let me give you a couple of good examples. Right now, we're looking at some food waste programs or projects with Metro since the transfer station is right across the freeway. If indeed we can work out some kind of a deal there, we may be able to produce twice as much or three times as much gas as we do right now. And part of what we're going to be looking at is, does it make sense to scrub that gas, compress it, and sell it back to the gas company, which is driving very high prices right now, or demanding high prices, or even turning that into electricity and either making us energy independent at the treatment plant or even basically putting power back on the grid? If we looked at it from Tri-City's standpoint, that would be a pretty tough road to hoe. But certainly, combined, two different districts looking at it, it opens us up to lobby a little harder with the Oregon Energy Trust for some supporting monies, as well as look at some other options. So those are, at least, that's one right there. Certainly, water reuse with us combined is another big issue there, and we're going to be looking at that in detail, as well as also looking at our solids handling or our bio solids program. We have some flexibility when you're talking about three times as many customers to look at some other options there, too. So at least those three areas, the reuse, bio solids, and energy, are something that we're going to be looking at pretty hard. So let me jump into this. As you recall, essentially, the stakeholders group itself said there was some benefit in economy of scales and at least enough to go forward and try to work on some type of an operating agreement. So that is essentially what we've been concentrating on over the last six months, I guess, six months. And the purpose of that really was define, to define how we are going to operate with each other when we look towards the future and future investments. Basically, it was a negotiation between the partners. I think you could say that the folks here at the table were more facilitating the process than actually driving the process. And I think the agreement that is essentially in front of you, that you've had a chance to look at, really reflects that. From my standpoint, it is a pure investment partnership. It does not change the current status of Tri-City's district or CCSD Number 1. Assets are still owned by those districts. All the existing agreements that are in place between the two districts or between DEQ and those districts are still in place. None of those items are affected. This purely focus on what are we going to do as we go forward. The other part of the agreement really commits the individual partners to support decisions once they make those decisions or those recommendations to the board. So what it does is form basically an advisory group that will concentrate on wastewater treatment and wastewater treatment only. They will basically make those recommendations to the board, and then the expectation is once the board approves that, is each of the partners will back that through their rate structures. So that's a pretty important point to that. I think the other big question that we've been trying to answer for folks is the voting arrangement has essentially been set up so that each of the districts and the partners that are included within the districts have equal votes. So Tri-City's essentially will have, Oregon City will have 1 and 1/3 votes, West Lynn 1 and 1/3 votes, Gladstone 1 and 1/3, and that essentially will equal what CCSD brings to the table, so that one district, even though numerically they may have more customers, they can't dominate the discussion and drive the process itself.
So they'll have four?
Yes, they have four. So Happy Valley will have a vote, Damascus has a vote, Milwaukee has a vote, and then the unincorporated area of North Clackamas County has a vote. And then the Tri-City's partners will basically also have four votes. Okay?
And the county's role?
And the county's is a tiebreaker, if I remember right. Right?
Yes. Otherwise, no vote.
In order to put this in place, there was two additional commitments made. And one is the partners have agreed to go forward and look at the Kellogg plant and really explore the technical option, the financing plans, as well as a timeline for the final disposition of that plant. It does not mean there's any commitment to decommission that plant. It doesn't mean that any of the partners, at this point, have committed to paying for some downrating of that plant. The commitment of the partnership was go forward and look at those options, because in the past, it's really never been looked at in detail. We've all assumed that it was going to be decommissioned or assumed that that's the direction, and we really haven't explored the financial plans and technically what we might want.
The question I was going to ask was, that being the case, Milwaukee's vote, I mean, if that decision hasn't been made in terms of the operation of this plant, why would Milwaukee have a vote at this point?
A vote in the partnership itself?
Did I understand it was a vote?
Yes. Yeah, Milwaukee was invited as a full partner.
As a full partner, but when no decision has been made in terms of the disposition of their plant and whether they are actually going to have their treatment at this facility, why would they have a vote?
Well, actually, the Kellogg plant doesn't belong to Milwaukee. They're a contract service provider, receiver, and the plant itself belongs to CCSD Number 1. And I certainly have been advocating from the very beginning, whether this community partnership went through or not, I have to have a decision on what I'm going to do at the Kellogg plant, whether I'm going to run it in perpetuity, or whether I'm going to downsize it or completely eliminate it. And that's purely for me to put a 30-year, 20-year business plan together. I need to have a decision. So from my standpoint, the community partnership really facilitates us going forward in at least exploring and hopefully making a decision in terms of the future disposition of the site.
To follow up on your, what I think is the assumption is that the partnership is only going to center about investments at the Tri-City plant. That's not necessarily true. It's going to be investments wherever is best decided by the partnership, so future investments could take place at Kellogg as well.
I guess the question probably wasn't very well phrased. The four votes that we have, does that have anything to do with the potential disposition of the Kellogg site?
Yes.
Yeah.
It does.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Well, that's a decision of the partnership, but, and then the County Commission has to affirm.
Correct.
And with the expansion of Tri-City, the major treatment for the region will be through the Tri-City plant. Kellogg will serve as a support capacity.
Well, as it's configured, absolutely, right now, that makes sense. I don't know what it's going to end up looking at, because when you start to look at a system, this system of two districts as a whole, you may make some different decisions than we've made in the past.
But you have some inherent limitations in what Kellogg can do.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I think it's safe to say that the board made a decision a year or two ago, I guess it's been about two years, that essentially, we would not expand that facility beyond where it is right now. In fact, the Phase 1 work that's going on is actually downsizing it about 25 percent, so...
Would it also bear on, for example, use, or who gets to use the treated effluent from the plant? It's kind of interesting that, in this day and age, people are expressing interest in using water that comes out of a sewage plant, because I know Sunrise Water Authority has expressed an interest in that, and I expressed, Ellen, I have an interest as well.
Right.
And I'm just wondering, is that the type of allocation or decision that the, you know, the body as a whole would have to vote on, or how would that...
Yeah, how I envision this shaking out is, we will be making some of those decisions as a system as a whole, and then we're going to have to still strike agreements between the districts in terms of how that's going to be put together. So there's a lot of details that will have to be worked out, but the decision on what we do will be made by the partnership and then forwarded up to the board.
Yeah, and Tri-City's expressed strongly that we wish to have that. Can we talk about rates, just real briefly, because this is part of history?
Right.
Because it was very, very important to the Tri-City triumvirate that the rates, that we wanted to protect the rates for our people for the investment that we had made. So I just want your assurances again that that structure that we agreed to is still in place and that our rate increases won't happen until we all begin to grow and the extra capacity is needed for our...
Right now, it's being handled separately. In fact, we're meeting with Larry and the rest of the city managers, I think, next week to talk about the budget for Tri-City's. It will continue that way until there is a discussion at some point in time, or maybe there won't be a discussion, about whether we move to a common rate structure. We have not made that decision. That'll be a future discussion. Let me also throw in, one of the other items that is in here is an agreement by all the partners to revisit the governance structure after a three-year period. So certainly, if indeed this partnership is not working or the partners want to go a different direction, that was agreed to and will be on the table, so...
Okay. Jim?
Getting to rates also. By Oregon City and the Tri-City's partners entering into this agreement, is there a risk to us that we would be compelled or, as a matter of circumstances, required to raise our rate payers' rates higher than we otherwise would if we didn't join the partnership?
Well, you know, that's a little bit of a speculation, but let me... As we go forward in time, let's say that we talk about what we're going to do for that next investment, and let's say that next investment is $100 million. You're now talking about spreading $100 million over 150,000 customers as opposed to 35,000. That would intuitively say Tri-City's investment is going to be less than if they went alone. Certainly, as we go forward, we're going to be looking at that, and I think part of the discussion I've had with the Tri-City's folks is that $4 million lump sum that we all agreed to for the Phase 1, that'll come back over to Tri-City's as soon as the Phase 1 is done, is essentially, that will be put into a fund that will essentially manage to offset any of those rates that may come from the future investment. Right now, the rate differential, if you look at wholesale rates, which is what Tri-City's does, Tri-City's is somewhere around that 11 and 1/2. I think we've got a little bump built in there this year, but it's about 50% of what Service District Number 1 is right now. They're running a wholesale rate of about $23 per customer per month. You know, there's no way in the world that you can levelize that over, you know, five or 10 years. That's a long term. If indeed we want to go to a common rate, we're going to have to figure how we're going to get there and what the timeline is for that, so I hope that answers it.
Yeah, I think that will bear some future looking, but we've been over and over and over those numbers.
Right. And that's one of the, to me, that's one of the beauties of keeping the districts separate at this point, is it does keep that finances, it keeps the ownership intact, so we can have those separate rate discussions.
Coming back to Alice's point in terms of mitigation, I'll just phrase it a more general way. In this IGA, does Oregon City get anything out of it other than what the other Tri-City's partners get out of it?
No.
And how do we guarantee that this is looked at in the future?
Essentially, you just raise it to the partnership, and it goes under discussion as a agenda item in the partnership. We specifically, in trying to put the operating agreement together, we specifically tried to eliminate those future discussions from it. So I imagine there's going to be quite a few items, financial items, on the table as soon as we get going.
The aesthetics of the plant, I thought we had agreed to. The greenness of the plant, the footprint itself, I thought we, I thought all of that was built into the budget.
It is built into the current budget, correct.
Okay.
And we also have a site master plan that was approved under which we got a conditional use permit, so we will be following that unless we come back and go through that process.
Does that apply to the whole periphery of the combined facility?
Outside again? Yes. Yes.
It does. And we looked at that as a combined group as we went through the master plan process two, three summers ago, I think, now.
Right.
So that essentially is a little bit that we get, because we, I think, I don't know, we insisted it must be that way, but...
Right.
Continue.
That's pretty much all I've got. I've got Chris here, who has essentially drafted the legal language behind this. So if you have questions, if he and I can't answer it, certainly we'll look at Larry, so...
Do you have comments, Chris?
Not at all. I'm here to answer questions.
Okay.
I guess I still have a hard time with leaving to the fact that Oregon City... No recorder, is she all right?
All right, it's just video stream, you know.
Kill the microphones.
Basically serves as the anus of this area. I don't know how you look at it in any other way, and yet there is no fundamental recognition in this IGA that that's the case. I can make almost the same control about the metro transfer station. However, we do get a benefit from that. We do get a tipping fee. I don't see that we get anything from this, given the service that we provide, users that extend way beyond our city.
Okay. Lynn, did you?
Yeah. You know, I think what we have to recognize is what Mike was just saying, that if we try to deal with all future potential what-ifs, we wouldn't be here before you today. And, you know, what we're weighing is a lot of other cities' what-if scenarios as well that they wanted to put in here that need to be dealt with later in this process. But I think that we all recognize upfront that this is where the capacity is going and that you have agreed to it, and while it may not be...
I haven't voted on an IGA. I mean, that has not happened, and to say we all have agreed to it. I know you've had sessions and so forth, but I haven't voted on an IGA yet.
No, no, no. What I meant was that the Tri-City plant is remaining.
Yes.
And there is, right now, ongoing an expansion.
I understand what's ongoing.
So all I'm trying to say is that I don't think anybody disagrees with you, that this is something that Oregon City is taking on.
Yeah. If you just, if you recall, our Tri-City partners didn't agree either to an impact fee or... So I'm hoping that...
I understand, but I'm not sitting here representing, I'm not on the board or anything else representing Tri-City. I'm here representing the City of Oregon City.
Well, I hear what you're saying. I'm with you.
I'm just ready.
Off the barrel.
Jim?
Taking Doug's analysis a step further.
Analogy or analysis?
Not analogy, analysis.
Keep it clean.
What exactly would hypothetically happen if we got all snarky and didn't approve this?
Hypothetically?
Or really?
Well, hypothetically, we'll start there. Let's say that Oregon City does not approve this and basically says, "Sorry, we don't want to play." And all your other partners basically say, "Yeah, we agree with this." What it means is that Oregon City will not be on the table when it comes to discussions about future investments. It means that Oregon City would still be at the Tri-City's Advisory Board when we discuss the impact of that to the Tri-City's district, but you will lose the seat at the table to influence the direction of where we're going.
And you will still have...
And you will still have a treatment plant that's...
Absolutely.
No water plant.
Good point.
Bottom line here is the partnership, all the discussion about votes, it's a advisory committee. The county commission is the governing body of the districts, and what you have is a super-regional plan at this point.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The, the, the real politic of all of this is, the county's calling the shots, and the county made the decision to expand the treatment plant at the current site, and there wasn't really squat that the city could, could do about it.
Well, in concert, no, that's not quite right. In concert with our, our partners, Westland and Gladstone, we looked at the go-it-alone scenario, and we looked at the, the other scenarios together, and decided that we would play, because it really is the only game in town. And when you look at the projected rates of the go-it-alone, out, right now it's fine. When you look at out in the future, when our growth occurs, the consolidated plan makes, makes sense. It doesn't make sense on the short term, but we believe we, that we've protected that on the short term. And it's, you know, I do sort of agree, you know, we got no points for being people that helped with the solution. We have, you know, the thank you letters on the wall, but that it doesn't really help, help us in a monetary way. So I do lament the fact that we, that we haven't done that, but I'm also confident that, that we have that list of mitigation factors that we can talk about in the future, as I'm hoping that both through this process and other processes, because in my mind, I don't care if it's necessarily a direct mitigation, it can be an indirect, but it, it is, I do, I do lament that, but I believe in the long run, as we all begin to talk, it's really the only game in town, in town, to make this all work together.
Let me give you a little different take on it. When you look at the issue from a regional perspective, this is something that had to be done from a region, whether we lacked it in Tri-City, or whether we lacked it in Oregon City. I mean, for the betterment of the region, and which does spill over into our jurisdiction. I would tend to agree with Commissioner Seda when the decision was made, yes, we had a seat at the table, we could voice concerns, and we were able to work on the edges and really voice the concern, but the reality is, that decision was made elsewhere, and whether we wanted to go a different direction, I think the die was fairly well cast, be it Clearwater, be it Fed today. When you form this partnership, and you start talking about the issues of mitigation, which I still personally think that Oregon City's entitled to something here, but as city manager, I would, is probably the partnership is not a good place to have that discussion. You're going to be one and a third vote in a big committee, in which no one, in the beginning, even saw that issue the same way, and so you probably can't accomplish much there, other than continue to raise the issue. I think what this does, though, is go into the little bank of a bigger discussion between the county and the city about Clackamas County's relationship with Oregon City, and really, how do you begin to equalize the impact that Clackamas County has? So I think that's a discussion probably between two boards. We can continue to talk about it, the partnership, I just don't think that's going to be a vehicle to get very far.
If I could, let me also follow up too. I think it's important to recognize that this last IGA we put in place between the two districts, from the decision to expand there for CCSD, did end up in a monetary benefit to Oregon City. And that's both a $4 million payment that'll go to subsidize future rates, or to at least dampen them, plus you're going to see about $500,000 a year in extra O&amp;M money that'll cut the operating expense. Those two alone is a huge, huge break to Tri-Cities. Now, there's no question that all three partners got the same deal, but I think it's important to recognize, there was some monetary benefit that did come out of that.
And should have.
I won't disagree with that.
But let me correct, let me...
Interesting negotiation.
Let me correct one thing, too, that I think probably wasn't stated correctly. You ask if there's decisions that could be made that would increase the sewer rates for Oregon City in the future, and the answer to that is, yes, there is. An issue such as Kellogg and the decommissioning, particularly with this larger partnership, could have financial impacts. It really depends on, as we've talked about it, the partnership, identifying what the costs are, and what the benefits, and who they're to, and then through that group, trying to work is, what is the appropriate equity that all parties share? And again, you're one and a third votes in this bigger group, that people will have a lot of different viewpoints. Again, but long term, but still, how do you address this big issue for this region? And this is, this is the ballgame.
Well, I think the protection on that, though, is that Tri-City would be a voting block on that. So I think before, there's, there's no way that we'd be divided on rate pair protection.
It'd be four to four, and it comes to the county.
I know. But we also have power, we also have the power of the people on that one. So I, I mean, I think that that's what forces us into negotiating together, is that we do, we do have populations behind us that really care about what we're doing. Jim?
Someone new in town and new on the commission, educate me on what communities, when this plan is complete, when this plant is complete, what communities will it serve?
The community partnership will include Damascus, Happy Valley, unincorporated, North Clackamas County, Milwaukee, and the three Tri-Cities. Lake Oswego was involved in this, as well as Oak Lodge was involved in this in the initial discussions, but they both pulled out of this. Doesn't mean they won't come back, but they pulled out.
You say unincorporated Clack, North Clackamas County, you would mean unincorporated urbanized?
That portion of CCSD that, or of the county that is currently served by CCSD District. It's about, if I remember right, it's about 35,000 or 40,000 customers.
But not all of them. Is Oak Lodge unincorporated?
No, they're basically, it's the unincorporated areas up towards Happy Valley, up around the borders of Damascus, as well as actually even in some areas between Gladstone and Milwaukee.
So won't be the only plant in the area, because I know Oak Lodge still has a...
No, it won't. In fact, CCSD runs four different plants. Kellogg is just the biggest of their four.
What are the four?
Hoodland, Boring, Fisher Forest Park, and then Kellogg. And then Tri-Cities just runs the one plant, and then the only other plant in the area is the Oak Lodge plant.
Okay.
In fact, I think there's a description of the districts are in there.
Right.
Yeah, in there.
Oh, in the, in the River Health.
Right.
Okay, so what are the next steps here? What are you doing beyond signing of the IGA?
Well, the next steps, moving beyond this, is we're going to move straight into the strategic planning process of looking at the system as a whole, and one piece of that is looking at the Kellogg issue. The second piece, moving in that strategic planning process, is to look at biosolids and what our options are there. We've known for quite a while, we've got to start doing something at Tri-Cities. CCSD has got some pretty major decisions in terms of how they're going to handle biosolids, so those will be the next couple pieces. So really, over the next year and a half, we're going to really be doing strategic planning on how we move forward. And this is where we're going to get into a lot of the new technologies, green technology discussions.
And that's on the, kind of the technical part of this group's work going forward, the partnership's work. Separate from that, the county board of commissioners is undertaking a discussion and on new land that will come into the urban growth boundary, and how that is served, and how, and work that out with the cities in terms of services provided, and that would include the sewer. So that's the conversation that we distinctly heard we needed to have, but we also, also we have many commissioners who wanted to have that discussion. But part of that, and a parallel process, will be a discussion of what to do with the existing areas in terms of level of services that we provide. So we're going to have a discussion about, you know, from code enforcement, which we hear a lot of in the urban unincorporated area, to the trees issues that we're working on right now with the tree task force. What are we able, as the county, to provide in terms of level of service? And if the urban unincorporated would like more service, a higher level of service, how would we pay for that? So that's a separate discussion, but it's going to be the, kind of the next step of how do we deal with service provision in the urban area, so.
Doug?
In the longer term, it's probably going to make sense, efficiency-wise, to have a combined sewer service district and not have the separate Tri-Cities and so forth, I would think. I mean, if we got a, if we got a common, if we got a common area and we're providing these services, I think in the, in the long term, we really need to look at that, in spite of what our individual anxieties are about what's going on. I think it's probably going to be more efficient ultimately to do it that way.
Certainly, from my standpoint, it'd be much easier to manage, and it certainly gives us a lot more power when we go to the credit markets to borrow money, to have a larger organization rather than two separate ones. So absolutely agree with you. How we get there is the next couple steps.
It's kind of a cumbersome, yeah, it's kind of cumbersome government structure, government's structure, but, you know, it probably has to have that phased approach, I guess.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? And this will be on our agenda next, at the next commission meeting next week, so.
Great.
Well, again, thank you so much. You guys have been a complete utter pleasure to work with, really, over the...
Really, you have.
That gives us an impression about the other partners, and...
But thank you.
One, one last question from Mike. This goes again to the conversation, Lynn and I were having this afternoon. It's kind of off-topic, well, maybe not. The capping of the old Rossman landfill.
Uh-huh.
What's going on with that? How much is it going to cost? How far away is commencing the, you know, the construction of that, et cetera?
We have an agreement with DEQ that we will clean up that facility, or cap it. There is no timeline on it. It's to our advantage to not do that until we absolutely have to do that.
You're talking about the piece that's on the Tri-City property?
Correct, correct, uh-huh.
Okay. We called the other one Rossman landfill.
Yeah, we did have some money that was set aside for the Phase One project, in case when we were doing the excavation, we hit some of the, the landfill, we were going to have to do some work. Luckily, we did not hit it itself. So that will be part of the discussion of, how do we handle that as we go forward? It's kind of a mixed blessing. It'd probably be cheapest to do now and just move forward, but the question is, do you really want to do it now, or do we want to wait until we know what our land requirements are going to be for the rest of the facility as we go forward, so.
Do you know what the cost estimate is on the project?
No, I've never seen a total estimate. And truthfully, until you open the ground, and find out what's there, we won't really know what the cost is. I can tell you, if all we're going to be doing is leveling it and capping it, and then building something on top, we're probably looking in that 10 to 12 million dollar range. But if we have to do mitigation associated with that, or if we find something that we have to create a barrier between the landfill and the river, then we could be talking some pretty serious dollars.
10 million is a serious dollars to me. Why does it cost that much?
Okay?
Okay.
We appreciate you coming in, and I appreciate your patience without translation. Thank you. Okay, moving on down the agenda, next on the agenda is Main Street. So, yeah, Lloyd, why don't you come on up to the microphone?
As Lloyd's coming up, let me give you just a quick update on this. You do have in your packet this evening, a request for increased funding from Main Street. As you recall, initially, we did approve a, a funding request of $35,000 per year for three years. That's coming out of the business license fund. And the request you have is to increase that to 50,000 per year. In my opinion, it's probably a funding request that is needed. I think if Main Street is to be successful, it definitely needs to be funded at the appropriate level, and I think initially going in, as it was getting started, and it was new, I think they probably shot a bit low, and so probably the 50K would help, and you have a budget in there that Lloyd has put together to kind of show you what they're looking at there, and what their other revenue sources are. Your business license in the business license fund generates roughly $35,000 annually, and you're beginning this year with a beginning fund balance of 213,000. So if you wanted to approve this type of request, you could accomplish that here over the next two to three years as well, so.
Okay. Welcome, Lloyd.
Thanks, glad to be here.
Want to take it from there?
Sure. I have passed out a, a copy of the letter I had submitted to Larry, as well as some extra information. It gives you a feel for the progress we've made downtown in a short three months, so that's the thicker packet that I just passed out. I think, I think Larry is right, and I'm coming into this, not late in the game, but after MSOC was created, I think the startup funding was not quite enough, especially to maintain the level of activity that we're trying to maintain, and to do the good that we're trying to do. This packet gives you just a taste of some of the projects that I'm working on, that other board, other committee members are working on. And I'll entertain any questions you have about this, or I can walk you through the packet, whatever you prefer.
Could we, could you talk to us about the revenue forecast? Where the funding is coming from in those, and what you anticipate levels for the next three years?
The goal is to, as quickly as possible, but who knows what that timeline is, shift funding onto downtown stakeholders fully. Main Street Oregon City is a grassroots organization. It does need to be funded, I think, mostly locally. So we do want to trend toward property owners and businesses supporting the activities that benefit them. You can see here, we've got, on page two, at the bottom, to answer Alice's question, this would be the current breakout of funding. We'll be working on gathering property owners, business support, and other downtown stakeholders to support and buy into Main Street Oregon City. And the goal for that is $71,896 over the course of a year. That's ambitious. I don't know if it's going to happen this year, but that's what we're, we're working for as a fundraising goal. We want to meet that, match that, leverage that against, leverage that against, can you hear me here? I don't have to be right on it, but, okay.
Should be able to be on it.
Leverage that against $50,000 of city support, which is an increase from what was originally, originally asked for. And we know that the county is also coming up, this is their cash, the $10,000 is their cash contribution, but between the county program and the state, there's a greater portion of in-kind support, technical support, training for board members. And that's really one of the stages we're at now, by the way, is building the capacity of a local group to take care of local issues, not turning to the city, not turning to the county, not turning to the state for operations, but coming to those sources for the, the good projects we want to get done, not just operations.
To be clear, then, so we funded you at 30 for, 35 for one year.
One year, right.
So the 50 is for the additional two?
50 would be for, for the next year.
Are you just asking us for one year?
No, I, this is just, this is just for the...
What's your ask?
Yeah, 50,000 for this year, the next year coming up.
Okay, for one year.
Right.
Okay.
But it was always anticipated that the Main Street program wasn't going to be a one-year thing. So this is just your renewal request, I'm assuming?
This is a renewal, this is a renewal and an up, good way to phrase it.
Well, except that we committed to 35 for three years, so that's why I'm trying to get it figured out.
35 each year for three years is my understanding.
Yes, that's what I mean.
So I'm saying, right now, I can already tell, in the second year, we need to, as we're talking about renewing, we would need an up.
Okay.
Third year, I don't know, I don't want to ask, we'll wait and see.
Okay, okay. I didn't know whether it's, I just, my question was really, is this a three-year request or a one-year request?
I think right now, I'm comfortable asking, I don't want anybody off the hook for nature, I want downtown stakeholders buying in.
Daphne?
It's kind of, I don't want to, it should maybe say, it's unfortunate that we have number E, or letter E, coming up later, the Warner Falls Heritage Area Coalition, because when we come and talk about that, you know, one of the, what was the four shuns and a, and a mint, you know, the importance of creating a national heritage area, a lot of it is, is flood preservation and tourism and downtown revitalization. They want to have, they would like communities to be able to show effort in that area, which we are doing with this Main Street program, so I'm just stressing the importance of it. We did, we're going to talk about that later tonight, but...
It certainly ties into...
You know, when you want to build a national heritage area.
Jim?
Just to go back to the funding, so essentially, you said 30, we funded 35 for the first year. So this represents an increase of $15,000 for the second year.
Over the, over the second year commitment, right.
Which was also going to be 35,000.
That's my understanding, right.
So the next question then becomes, what source of funds in the budget did we fund this with last year?
Business license tax.
And so is this going to be just a bigger hit on the business license fund?
That's correct. Doug?
I presume we're talking about something that'll be kind of effective with our next budget year, starting in July. budget year, starting in July. Okay, I just wanted to give the timeframe for it. And just from my standpoint, the, and you may have it already, but the formal endorsement of the Chamber of Commerce is extremely important. Because when we raised the business license tax fee, it was on a recommendation from the Chamber. And that doesn't, that doesn't mean they've got a say in it, but I think their, you know, their support, in fact, is an important element that I would always take into account. And we don't have to know that now, but at the time we make a decision, we'd like to see if we get that endorsement.
We had a board meeting on Monday where they did, want to make sure I was here to present this. Amber Holbeck, the CEO of the Chamber, is on our board, and I assume it was with the Board's blessing that I'm here. So there's an implicit endorsement there. If you need a...
An explicit one would be nice.
There has been one from the Board when we originally reported to support the...
Yeah, was that for the $50,000 or was that, no, that's what I'm actually talking about.
You want to see for an increase?
No.
Chamber support increase. I can get, when would you like that?
Well, I think it's something that comes in the process. I don't know if we're going to deal with this when we pass the budget. I presume it comes off, we would do it perhaps as a line item in the budget when it comes to the commission.
We could do a separate motion, too, which probably is, I sort of like doing it as a separate motion because I think it's appropriate to showcase Main Street.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have, the way it's done, as long as I understand correctly, it is for the coming budget year, starting in July.
Yeah, and I have to say that having the Main Street program has certainly helped the work that I think the city does, or the work that I'm involved in, in that it's really nice having a partner. It's nice having, being able to, when groups come to town, to be able to have someone to direct that, you know, today doing the windows, part of the 150th celebration, the, one more thing, oh, the closed bridge, really taking the leadership role and taking a lot of hits on that.
Spending with the Chamber.
Spent all morning with them, that was exciting.
I just think it's so, but it is extremely helpful to have someone downtown in that area for business owners to, you know, rouse, to complain to, and problems solved together. So I really, I really appreciate the work. I think it's money, money well spent. Daphne?
So am I understanding you correctly, Lloyd, that you're saying that you're hoping that this year, you're, it's 2010, 11, you're asking for $50,000? And then you're kind of hoping you aren't going to be here asking again?
I heard that, too.
Because I don't want you to undersell...
No, I don't either, but I want to, the value of this program is that it's locally driven as even a sub municipal level of activity. And the way I think the good goal is to be as soon as possible to get downtown property owners, downtown businesses, you know, who benefit from our activities to share the benefit. But I'm not saying no to the next years.
I think you have to look at this realistically, too. Your Main Street program is still very much in its infancy. And with what we're trying to accomplish in urban ill, particularly if we move back into the core, you want to make sure this program's successful in it. It may take more than a couple of years.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I'm not willing to comment right now on year three yet.
Good. Because if you did that, you would be beating the national averages of what they set funding is like after national convention.
What did they say?
What was the third, third, third?
It's always good to have some city buying, because, like you said, we're doing some of the work in collaboration.
Doug?
Like I indicated, I don't care when the vote is, but I do, I do feel that our budget document has to have a line item that indicates that expenditure. Whether we actually vote on this item at an earlier date, I'd want it reflected in the budget itself as a line item.
Can I make a request of Larry? Larry, would you do the favor of sending to the commission a breakdown of how much is in the Business License Fund currently and what are the current allocations, the demands on it, as it were, as of right now?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments of Lloyd? Thank you. Have any last? Okay, great, thank you. We'll talk about that again then at our next meeting. That, will that be on the agenda?
Probably we'll take this up, we could do it next meeting, we could do it, actually, we can take the budget up.
Oh, fine, either way, whatever.
Unless you need anything beyond this before that.
Nope. We can wait till...
We'll let you work out what your needs are.
Yep, great.
Thank you. Next, Clackamas Heritage Partners discussion. I'm not sure what that is.
I'm not either.
We have somebody who does.
I don't sure why that's put on it.
I think that was a placeholder in case we had anything ready to, given what, again, we're still in the process of soliciting for RFPs on that, so until we get...
Yeah, we're just about, I think, to look at getting somebody on board.
Since it is on the agenda item, I would like to chat about it. Thelma's asked to speak, and I wonder if you could indulge her.
Please, please introduce yourself. Thelma Hagen-Meller, Oak Lodge resident. But in the tourism business, which is why I asked to have something to do with this. And I don't know why it was on the agenda, but I saw it was there. And I was here when you made the motion and the vote to hire a consultant up to the $25,000 to help CHP or help yourselves get an idea of what was going on. As I heard that motion, I think what I heard, and I may be mistaken, but what I heard was that the motion was to take the money out of the Business License Fund at that time. Having thought this over after, because I didn't say anything that night, after leaving here and knowing how things work in the city, I would suggest that you rethink the source of your funding. I think it's much more appropriate that you look for funds out of your OCCIT money rather than your business license funding. Because, well, you've got your Main Street program going after, and I don't know what else comes out of business license funding, but a lot of the businesses that are ancillary out there, businesses that those of us in the tourism industry call the trickle-down business, and they're at the bottom. And they do get money from the tourism that's brought into the city, but most businesses out on the outer edge of the trickle-down effect don't realize it. And yet they have to pay a business license. Where those involved in the tourism dollars directly, that apply for the tourism dollars, get direct benefit back. And having sat in many of the OCCIT meetings, I know, first of all, that you've given out all your money from the last go-round, but you're also now accumulating new money for the next go-round. Since I'm in the industry and I've actually applied for some of the OCCIT money when I was with the Chamber, I think that the 25, up to, up to $25,000 would be much more beneficial to come out of that pot. The pot is accumulating as we speak. It was $87,000 or so the last time you gave out six months of it. So we know it's going to be probably, even though it'll be down because the economy's down, it'll be someplace more than $25,000. And you'll know going into it, when you hire a consultant, that that consultant might not get all his money upfront in one lump sum, but then I wouldn't hire a consultant under those things anyway. So you can pay the consultant as the money comes in, and you'll still have money left over. That's my whole thought.
Thank you. Any responses to that?
No, excuse me, the point that we've made that allocation, we could call a special meeting of that board if we so choose to do so, to allocate future funds out of that to make up that difference.
Those funds will likely be spent, though, by the time accumulation is...
No, I was going to say, but I do happen to recommend the demand on that in terms of grant requests that came in. And there were many, many projects that were turned down because the funding wasn't sufficient to do it. So I don't, I don't know that I'd consider it at this juncture. But should, in fact, there be an indication that there's some source of support that was needed for the Clackamas Heritage Partners, and then we basically made some decisions on regard to whatever the consultant put forward. It'd be possible for the Clackamas Heritage Partners themselves to come forward for a request at a future point. But other than that, I wouldn't want to revisit what we've done.
Yeah, we've talked about revisiting both of our grant programs. And I think the conversation that I might like to have, not having thought this through very well, but is, we already pulled, I think, $40,000 right now at metro enhancement for the visitor center. And we pulled some for code enforcement out of that. And, actually, $40,000 is for the tax mitigation. We have a tax offset. David's not here. I think it's $40,000 annually. So there are some pieces that we pulled out of metro enhancement that fund city projects. And if we wished to, in the future, have a steady, stable revenue stream, we could do that again. Because we have, I think we're funding the visitor center for another three years or another four years, I think. But it was a long, it was a ten-year request. And so we do have the ability to do that and fund things that can't be funded through the general fund or that are more appropriately funded there. So if, I think this is probably a conversation for like November, but if we want to talk about both of those grant programs and make a recommendation to allocate the funding differently, you know, use a portion for grants and a portion for ongoing city necessities.
You post the...
There you go, the AMPAC fee, yeah. So anyway, I think that's probably though for the future. Jim?
Okay, I'd get an update on what the status is of the consultant search. My recollection from the vote that evening on the consultant was that the scope of what the consultant would do would be something that the commission would do upon approval of a consultant.
Do we have approved a consultant?
Yeah, we've got RFPs out. We're in the process of looking at a date for those interviews. And Terry, you recall what that date is?
Well, the RFP close is Tuesday, Friday.
And I've asked Commissioner Smith...
And we're looking at interviews for the following week.
And I've asked Commissioner Smith to sit on the interview.
Could I get a copy of the RFP sent to me in PDA? Thank you.
Any other questions about that? We'll be talking about that a lot more in the future. Okay, Tree City USA proposal?
Yeah. So the planning department's been looking into Tree City designation. And that, as you know, is one of your goals for this coming year. And there are four components of being a Tree City, the four criteria that you have to meet. And we meet most of them, actually. The first one is, is when it...
That's a screamer.
Turn that other microphone off, and that may...
Try this guy.
Sure. Got it working?
I guess it is. So, so again, there are four criteria. The first criteria is to set up a tree committee. And it's a very flexible requirement. That can be a tree committee, it could be a subcommittee of a parks board, it could be a subcommittee of planning commission, it could be any sort of combination of folks that we wanted to assign. And it could also be done administratively with city staff. So it's really up to us on how we want to structure that. But it's pretty, it's pretty flexible requirement. And it really don't require, there's no real strict guidelines on how often the group has to meet. So if we did set up a committee, it would just meet as needed. There's a lot of flexibility on that. The second standard is to have a tree ordinance. We already have a tree ordinance. And as a part of your code package that you'll be hearing, actually, the next, on the May 20th city commission hearing, we've actually enhanced the tree code. So that's a requirement that will not require any additional work. The third requirement is for the city to spend $2 per capita on tree-related, either maintenance, code enforcement, or actually planting of new trees. And we took a preliminary look at how much we've spent this year between the planning department, public works, and Parks and Recreation Department. We've spent almost $80,000 this year. So that takes us well past the $2 per capita, which would be about $61,000. And that does not even include the money we've spent on code enforcement, dealing with tree removal and that sort of thing. So we don't see any current or long-range issue in meeting that monetary expenditure. And then the last standard, I know, is the mayor's favorite, and that is, we have to have an Arbor Day proclamation.
Ooh, I can do that.
So it's a, I think it's a pretty easy program to implement. It's going to take just a little bit of our time in terms of paperwork. You know, we have to, we have to account for the money that we spend and send that in on an annual basis. And other than that, it's a pretty, pretty easy thing to do.
Doug?
We see things coming back, I'm sure I can ask a question at that point. Is our tree ordinance basically focused on street trees? Or does it also deal with trees in parks and open spaces owned by the city?
Well, it deals with street trees, and it also deals with trees on, through private development, you know, as part of our development review.
Yes, right.
But I don't believe we have anything for parks. Can you think of anything?
Public spaces.
Chapter 12, away from this community forest and street trees. And technically, that extends to public right of, but it's not just street right of.
So it could be, it could put parks in open spaces, okay.
Questions about it? Any concerns, objections? Daphne?
So let me ask a further explanation. So if a tree was removed at a park because the tree was sick, does the city require to mitigate that the same way as or...
As a street tree?
As a street tree, is that what it would be? Or if it was in a park at a, you know, where...
Carnegie, let's say. If we had to remove those trees. Another screamer.
It's slightly different.
Is that on?
It is.
Thank you.
Because in the case of a street tree, the abutting property owner is responsible for the replacement. In the case of the parks, Larry Potter and the Parks Department, you know, are out there doing the replacement work as needed. But it's a slightly different standard. And in the budget workups that we did, Larry's department, I think they, they've got 106 trees planted for the 2008, 2009 year, so...
I think what Commissioner West was suggesting is that Larry take over the street trees, too.
Well, I talked to the urban forestry advisory forester for the ODF with respect to, can we count in this budget the cost of, you know, inclusion of the private property owners' costs to replace public street trees? And they're looking into it. They hadn't had that question before. There's a private burden there.
Doug?
Not directly related, but in terms of replacement of trees in parks, and I believe I had two people from the Parks from our committee complain to me of the caliper tree that was used to replace the trees at the Carnegie when those big elms were removed. That would take a lot longer for it to reach the kind of size. But it's more of an issue for parks and less an issue for tree ordinances. But if guidelines, in fact, are being adopted from our development standards in terms of parks, and they're, let's say, less rigorous, it might be something to look at. Just because of the tremendous shading potential and so forth that you have in a pub in particular, something that's essentially a plaza-type of environment like Carnegie is. It's just a comment. It has nothing to do with the ordinance.
Okay, any substantive comments about that? On the same line, we still have to plant 150 trees for, Oregon City is 150.
You haven't planted any yet?
No. No, and probably now it's going to be fall and winter, but what we need is a chair. We've had to, we needed another volunteer chair, we've had to replace, change, and so he was interested in heading up that project.
Can we make an observation?
I think it's a video streaming, so. Anyway, that's off topic and I'm sorry about that, but thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing that and, and May 20th, right? That's coming forward with all the code amendments?
All the code amendments are May 20th, right?
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition. I think this is me, so just a quick break? Okay, five minutes?
Sure.
We will break. And, oh, God didn't pass this out while you were gone, because I should have. One to Larry, one to you. And so take one of these. The purpose of this discussion is funding, but, so we have not had this discussion before. What the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition is a new name for what used to be called the Mayor's Group or the Willamette Falls Group or whatever, but the conveners of this group were the mayor of Westland, the mayor of Oregon City. And we convened it as the broadest possible umbrella to talk about the rich resources we had in the Willamette Falls area. And so in this coalition, which is, has no authority, it has no structure, and it is, has many willing and committed participants. But the, the umbrella includes the tribes, supposedly all user and interest areas, interested individuals and organizations in that area, so there's really no exclusion. Those who have voting interests, both recreationally and commercially, the county, the ISH floods, arts community, historical communities, the two mills, both managers have been there. I can't even think of any others, but if there, if, oh, state, state parks is a member?
Locks.
And the locks, yes. So they're, they're, oh, and the Willamette Falls Heritage Coalition headed by Sandy Carter, not coalition, Willamette Heritage Area, Willamette Heritage Foundation. Yeah, and they're the ones that have done the art projects and the others, and the Westland side of the river and really do some great work in the historical area. So what we, I think, I think we're in our fourth year, I'm not sure how long we've been meeting. It's been a long time. We came up with, with these particular goals that you see on the front page and they, we hurried to craft goals and mission and purpose because the S.S. Centennial was coming up and at the time it was rumored that the state might fund projects of statewide significance. And so we, I, at my first meeting of that pitched it because people were pitching projects of statewide significance. Well, the funding kind of went, so that project kind of went. And we began, we, we pulled back again and began to be more strategic about the direction. Where we are right now is this group just met with Gretchen Garenberg, ooh, forgot her last name, from the National Park Service, who walked us through once more what a national heritage area is. And a national heritage area becomes defined by the group. You, you do a, a master plan or feasibility study of the area. Congress can fund that or we can fund it ourselves. We, there, it requires no zoning changes, there's no reason for those who farm or those who have business to worry about taxing issues. It is a, it's a coalition that, or it is a, it's an area that will have to find a boundaries eventually recognized by Congress, but it has to go through the congressional process. It comes with a very little money. It's hoped that as the pots are being filled from the federal government, that this pot will be filled as well. But it essentially is administered by the group, so it's usually a nonprofit, which has not been formed at this point. So that's kind of a very broad background. Along the way, we explored the idea that it could be a state park as well because state parks now have a heritage area, that is a heritage area kind of strand, but that's a little bit on hold now because of the, of the economy. But they, State Parks has given us a couple of people that are, that meet with us every month who are working to gather all of this information and make, to eventually become a state heritage area. So that's, that's where we're working. So on the, on page two in the back is, that's actually old work. I came up with, I think, the idea that as you look at all the things that happened in this area, they were all first gathering places. First gathering places for native peoples, it was gathering place for all the boulders of the ISH flood, it was a gathering place for the first governments. And, and right now, we're looking, because we can't look, partly because we just don't have the resources, but we're, we're looking at the beginning, from the Twelton River to the, to the Clackamas River. But when you talk about first gathering places, it could be the entire Willamette River from its headwaters near Springfield to Fort Vancouver. So nothing's excluded at this point, though that's rather formidable. If you look at the last page, this is where my ask comes in. This has been funded as the locks, the locks program is an, locks project is an Oregon Solutions Program and the city of Oregon City funded, did we put in fifty thousand dollars? Thirty, ten? We put in ten thousand dollars to help with the organization of that. This coalition's very similar, where all of the participants are being asked to, you know, what, what can you pony up for administration? And right now, this is how it, how it, how it looks. The city of Westland has given up to five thousand, so they, that's where the ask is for Oregon City also. I said I would bring that back and so it was hoped that the two cities could do that. Westland was very reluctant for a long time and the new group of counselors and mayor over there are very excited about this, this project and about some tourism efforts that are happening in Westland. The ISH floods institute 250, the Arts Alliance, they're, they're juggling a number. CHP likely is not a player in this at this point, but when this list was put together a couple of months ago, they were. PGE likely will donate a large amount, but they already have. They've funded some study pieces and likely will be an important player. The county TDC has, that's, that's a national treasures study and they've also funded one of the studios at University of Oregon. And you see the rest. The Grand Ron Tribal Council has turned us on to a couple of grants that we can work together. Now, some of the low-hanging fruit that likely this group will look at are in the area around Willamette Falls, there needs to be a common signage, there needs to be a look that will likely be like a state park that, that, and so that's where we can apply for funding for signage if we wish. Okay, and then the in-kind contributions you see, which are really pretty great for an organization that actually has no authority. So what I'm, and the activities that need money right now are, we've had two studios from the University of Oregon, the architecture and landscape, architecture students. You all, I think, came to the first one up at the Museum of the Oregon Territory and saw the student work. Then the next one actually is going to be this month sometime that, it's going to be in Westland City Hall, that'll be some of the other student work there. I'm not sure who's going to do the work, but we're hoping to hire a graduate student that will pull together some of the best of all of that work for serious, serious look. I think what the, what, I know, what the coalition had thought was that by using these existing resources, student work and very skilled professors who are, who know how to hone in on vision and use that creativity as a cheaper way to get part of the master plan done. So that's, that's why we're doing it. So what I am asking you tonight is if you are willing to look at funding up to five thousand dollars to be part of this, of the work as needed. Daphne sits on the coalition as well and we certainly invite you to all of the things that happen because again, it's, yours is an important part of it as, as anyone, being a total volunteer organization. So what do you think? Doug?
Just a kind of a broad question here. First, I mean, first of all, I probably, I imagine I could support it if we could identify the funding source and deal with it, but going beyond that five thousand dollars are things that we are involved in in terms of certain things and I'm just wondering to what degree they could fit the overall picture. I mean, the first one's a, a broad one, the connection to the falls, you know, you could look at the promenade as a, as one of those connections.
It is. It's included.
And, and of course, it's a state funding, but we're, we're doing things, we're doing things, additional resources are pulling into there and I'm not talking about that being the five thousand, but I think we need to identify what those are so we can show what a, what a broader contribution is and...
We actually have.
Okay.
They, as we, as we've put together all of the massive amounts of information for the two, three class studios that we have, we, we are definitely drawing the boundaries where things are. So it includes most of the historic stuff in, in Oregon City. Where we're headed on the short term is to talk with Congressman Schrader about funding the study, which may be ten, it's ten to twenty thousand dollars probably to have the study done. And the study is supposed to determine what kind of governance structure do we need? What, where should boundaries be? What's the political will? There'll be a public involvement piece, you know, when you roll out ideas, which we may actually do this summer or fall anyway because we have these student, student work and we really haven't had a public involvement piece. But, so to talk to him about that, to get him to be a champion for us in Congress and then see where we go, it's probably a five-year, three to five-year process of getting to be a national heritage area. And it, there will be, need to be some serious money along the way, but I don't expect that it would come solely from those, those few things. Yeah.
Well, I, I get so excited thinking about this. They were saying the four shuns and the mint. I can't, the recreation and historic preservation were two of the shuns, but I can't think of the three and four, but all the, you know, all the wonderful things that would come out of this and economic development, it's, it's just a win-win. But this in comparison to the Willamette Falls Access Project or the Aerial Skyway, this is already, this is like using the assets that we already have, we just have to dust them off, polish them up a little bit and tie them together versus recreating something here. We already have all these treasures and this would, this national heritage area would kind of link it. So I, I'm just pretty excited about this and I just, I hope we can make it work. Jim?
I have a question. Has Gladstone been invited to be part of this? And the reason I bring that up is I've seen a survey map as far as first gathering places.
Yeah.
I've seen a, I've seen a survey map that has delineated on the map, it's from the eighteen fifties.
Yeah.
Clackamas Native American villages on the north bank of the Clackamas River.
Yes.
And, and that seems just critical as part of the theme of this. And you know, if it's another twenty-five hundred or five grand, I mean, for both reasons, I think it's important that they should be invited.
I think, I believe, well, I don't think anyone's excluded at the beginning and we had seven river city mayors and I think they all were invited and participated in Congresswoman Hart and Darling Who is River Coalition meetings too. So they haven't attended recently, so that they're not excluded, but yes, good point. Rocky?
We had talked about the, the student plans and was that ever, the discussion of paying for those, was that ever...
That's what this is. That's what I...
So that, this five thousand dollars would be toward that?
Well, it's toward that and other administrative things that might be needed. I mean, there's many ways we can do it. I can come back to you each time because what we're, what we're doing is those who've already put money in and the money is kept at CHP as a fiscal agent. So the money's kind of put in the pool and when we need things for like setting up the studio or we have to pay the professors for the, the work product, you know, it comes out of one of, it comes out of that pot.
All this money sits with CHP? Is that what you...
It just, yeah.
No, 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 it's not.
That's what you're saying?
Yeah, they are the fiscal agent, so we, I know what Westland did last time, they, the studio was five hundred dollars, they put five hundred dollars at CHP, CHP wrote the check because we don't have, we're not a place with authority.
I guess it's just odd that they're the fiscal agent but yet aren't putting it in.
Oh, well, I don't know that they aren't.
Well, you said that you didn't think...
It'd be kind of tiring.
I, I think that would be a tough...
I just think that might be.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree. That's a funny one.
It's hard to introduce and they're the fiscal agent. I presume the accounting for this particular project is very clearly delineated from anything else that they do.
Well, we have a meeting on, oh, absolutely. We have a meeting on Thursday, that may change. We just haven't had a meeting since they closed, so, or we talked about funding.
No, you don't want that to change, what I just said, delineated...
Oh, no, 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 yes, I hear you. But yeah, the fiscal agent piece, you know, we may revisit.
Yeah, okay.
We can't count on them being... So are there any, are there any concerns?
About two that I wrote down that are missing out here and they're probably not missing.
Sure.
They just come down here.
Yeah.
The corb engineer.
Oh, yeah, they're there.
And the paper mills.
Yes, both mills.
Okay. They just aren't listed here.
Yeah, no. This was a preliminary list where we just got the funding that we needed and no, it'll, it'll expand.
One more.
Yes.
You know, I, the paper mills, it's so interesting that they're on this because I really do see this as kind of a, this could be a lead into their future really with this whole, as a tourism product.
Yep, definitely. We just took the National Park, Gretchen, the National Park Service representative through the Westland side of the mill and the PGE plant over there. It's just, it's an amazing, it's an amazing tour to see the, the old and how they've changed over the years. It's, it's a pretty incredible resource we have here. So any objections to going forward with this?
Well, in case of where the five thousand's coming from.
Okay, can we ask you to give us a recommendation where some funding sources could be?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
City manager's budget.
Drink up the printing press.
Okay, thank you. RV park concept plan improvements? Scott, that you?
Hello.
Hello.
Oh, there we go. Put the, put the one I just told me, please. There should be two slides, right?
I see your manager's park.
Yeah. That's our new city RV, so we need to use that for your...
Wow. Great. Yeah. It's kind of got a funny shape.
Well, you've all got a copy of this that was in your packet, I just wanted to put it up there for others in the audience who might even turn it out there. Can you, can you flip that?
I only have one.
No, I'm saying, is there...
He wants it like this. There you got it.
Let's not worry about that, we've got pictures and...
We probably can do it.
If anybody wants any out there, we can pass them down. Yep. So basically the, to give you, just to boil this down to what, what the issue is here, there's a, there's a primary question that we need to seek your direction on that is, is there a desire to continue operating our RV park? And I know that's a great, oversimplifying it a little bit, but that's, I wanted to sort of frame this, this conversation that way because really we do need direction from the commission and determining the direction of our RV park at Clackamas. We, we feel like that we're sort of in a state of limbo in operating that park and the reason is that the history is, as I think some or maybe most of you know, there's a 2002 waterfront master plan that was adopted. It was very comprehensive, all of the waterfront plumbing, which has led to a lot of what we're doing in terms of, you know, Johnson Park and the stuff that we're doing along the Willamette and the cove discussions and all those things. One of the elements of that plan is a recommendation that, that we, that we get rid of the, the RV park and that we turn it into basically just an extension of Clackamas Park with recreational and viewing purposes and, and some things of that nature. However, that, that goes back to 2002. We've taken no action on that. There have been no plans in place and that, the, the way that the language reads in that... the Willamette and the cove discussions and all those things. One of the elements of that plan is a recommendation that, that we, that we get rid of the RV park and that we turn it into basically just an extension of Clackamas Park with recreational and viewing purposes and some things of that nature. However, that, that goes back to 2002. We've taken no action on that. There have been no plans in place, and that, the, the way that the language reads in that, in that master plan is with the caveat of, as funding allows, we'll, we'll get rid of the RV, RV park and cease to operate it, and then do these other developments as funding allows.
I just, I mean, remembering conversations since I've been here, that where, where the policy, I think that we've always, kind of, whether it's formal, informal, is that we'll operate until we have something better.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Did it say remove or relocate?
Remove.
Did it say remove?
I don't, my review of that, and I reviewed it again today, was there's real, to my knowledge, there's no discussion of relocation. That's been a discussion sort of after the fact, I think. And I think Prac has discussed this a number of times, and there's been some discussion about that. So, that point is, is, is right on kind of where I'm going there with, with what your point is, and that is, again, the question, there's no action that's been taken regarding this, and if we're going to continue on this course, then what, what staff recommends is that we make some improvements to the park. If there is a desire to follow the recommendations of the, of the master plan, then we need some direction in terms of, okay, well, let's cease to do that, but then it basically will continue to, it's, it's not a great aesthetic site right now, but it probably would be worse if we just absolutely stopped operating it and didn't, and did nothing. So, we would need direction. If the answer to the question is no, we don't want to operate the RV park anymore, we want to follow that recommendation, then, then what do we do? I don't have any recommendations for you on that. If the answer is yes, let's continue operating the park, then, then I do have some thoughts for you and, and some things to consider. And, and again, these are, well, the concept, I guess, is what I want to frame this, and so, don't, don't take any of this as, as absolute, but, but we've enlisted the services of Langohansen Architects, and they've done a, a lot of our landscape architecture, and that's where this, that's where this rendering came from. It's a preliminary concept plan, I want to make that very clear, that's not a master plan, there's been, there's been any public process, but this is just to give you and the others that we're discussing with, like Prac and so forth, that, an idea of what we could be looking at. And the improvements include basically doing, redoing the paving of the entire park, adding a lot of new landscaping and new amenities, upgrading the stalls, and adding some additional parking spaces for what would be like a tow, tow-along vehicle. Most of the newer RVs, people tend to bring a second vehicle, and then what's nice about that is they drive around your town and they spend their money for a few days and do that kind of stuff. And then we've also shown some reorganization of our traffic flow pattern on here, because that flow pattern we have right now is, is not great. And they're, that basically, the paving is so old that it's turned into rubble and gravel, and it's, it used to be-
I know, they were-
It is. That's, that's a good point, because that is actually-
It's like gravel lot, yeah.
That's pavement that's turned into gravel. That's how, that's how deteriorated that, that situation is. So, and just roughly, again, estimates that this could cost us, if we went, you know, all the way with this and really made it as nice as possible, it could cost us up to about a half a million dollars. You know, again, there are ways to adjust that cost, depending on what we do or don't do, but that's, that's kind of what we're at. So, here's, here's a, here's a possible idea. If we wanted to go down that road, down that road, I estimated that based on making those improvements, we would be able to significantly increase our overnight fees. We've already ramped those up a little bit the last couple of years, and even with doing the minimal amount of maintenance and the minimal, minimal amount of improvements that we do, we still, we do, we do still generate revenue from that, from that site. And it does get used, and Mr. Potter can attest to that, we get a variety of types of vehicles that come through, and some of those are a little bit less desirable in terms of people try to abuse the system a little bit, it's sort of a self-service pay situation, and people try to sort of turn it into a temporary home, and we, we have to be careful about that. We do have some limits on stays. But we are finding that because of the desirability of, simply, it's, it's located right on the riverfront and in, in a metro area, in our metro area-
People talk about it all the time.
It is phenomenal that, that we have the ability for somebody to pull in and stay on the riverfront. So, we charge a higher premium for the actual riverfront sites and a little bit less for those that are back away. I'm, I'm, just rough calculations and rough estimations here, but being very conservative, and, and we average right now, over the last about four or five years, we average about 60 to 62,000 dollars a year in revenue from overnight fees for the RVs. I believe that with these improvements, on the conservative side, we would, we would be able to increase our fees to a level of, of at least another 25%, possibly another 50%. Our current fees are 20 and 25 a night. The nicer parks, I've done a little bit of informal research, just kind of locally around the, around the state, the nicer sites are charging up to 50 bucks a night, if you have the amenities that people want. And maybe, would you mind flipping to that next screen now for me with the picture of, of our commission RV? This is just, I grabbed this, I grabbed this off of a website.
For those who are video streaming-
I apologize.
It's a joke.
I will clarify that.
Yeah, it really is the city manager's RV.
I don't want to get anybody in trouble. I pulled this off of, pulled this off of a website at an RV park somewhere in Oregon, I don't remember which one it is, somewhere in the Willamette Valley, I think, on, there's a river in the background there. This is an example of the type of amenity that we'd be looking for. It's not the exact thing that we're looking for, but, you know, some, some greenery. Right now, we just have nothing but rubble and hardscape. Some greenery, some picnic tables, this is the type of, of vehicle that we could assume we would draw a lot more of. And basically, those types of folks that are doing that are looking for premium sites that have things that we don't have right now, some improved electrical hookups. We have a lower average than a lot of these folks are looking for now with these things, because basically, they've got washing machines and big, big screen TVs-
Oh, my goodness.
And literally everything in the world. They're looking for hookups to cable TV, so you just pull in and you have a little jacket, and we have a deal with a local cable provider that they provide the service at a charge, but that's part of the upcharge of, of a higher rate. You plug it in and you have cable access and internet access.
Yeah, Wi-Fi.
People are looking for those types of things, and so those are the types of amenities that you, that you could kind of envision if we went with the, sort of the higher-end improvements. So, I, I believe that we could increase our fees pretty significantly, and I also believe that we would increase our, the, the amount of, of occupancy that we have right now. We're running at an annual rate average of about 25% occupancy at the park. Right, Larry?
Now, it's 30 to 37.
Okay. It, it bounces up and down a little bit, but I think with, again, with the improvements, the occupancy rate would, would probably go up significantly. So, that 60,000 dollars a year, I think we could probably conservatively say we'd be looking at maybe between 100 and at the high end, 150,000 a year that that would generate. The, the idea would be, the, the issue is, we don't have the half a million dollars or whatever the determined amount would be that we would want to spend, however, however we would want to, whichever direction we want to go in terms of development, higher end or sort of go middle of the road, we could certainly save some of those costs. But if we wanted to do the improvements without a funding source identified right now, an idea that, that I've, I've kind of kicked around a little bit, and, and that I think is doable, is that we can do some type of an inter-fund loan out of, out of somewhere in the city and pay that back with, with the revenues that we generate. And potentially, if we went with a half a million dollars and we generated 100,000 dollars a year, you can kind of do the math, we could potentially pay that back within five years. If we wanted to spread that out over more years, we could do that, or less. I think there's some state limitations on how quickly we would have to pay back an inter-fund loan. Potentially, maybe we could fund a little bit of it with some contingency and then do the balance with an inter-fund loan. Just a number of ideas, and again, these are just very preliminary conceptual discussions. The, the outcome of making these improvements would be several. One is obviously, it would greatly enhance this area and this portion of our, of our city, which is, which is very visible, and it's a very, it's very much our desirable portion of our waterfront, both in terms of aesthetics and visibility of what people see when they come to town. I think it helps our tourism and our visitorship greatly. It becomes a destination site for these types of people. I don't mean to, that's sounding wrong.
These types.
For these, these types of-
We wish we were these types.
Vehicles, these types of travelers with these types of vehicles, they spend, they tend to come to town and spend a lot of money. And, and it increases the, the visibility of our city in terms of tourism, gives people another option besides the one hotel that we have in town when, when people want to come from out of town to stay in Oregon City. It increases our lodging tax revenue that we receive back through in our OCCT fund. People that stay at our RV park do pay the, the county's lodging tax rate, and then that comes back a part of that to the city, so we-
We have a separate city tax. It's not part of the county tax.
Okay, yeah, yes. So, the, the lodging tax is paid at the RV park, and that, that portion that is the city's does come back to us. And then, I think lastly, and this is a longer-term thing that is, a financial thing that is a benefit to the city, is that after the improvements have been paid off, if we did some type of an arrangement like what I've discussed, we have an ongoing stream, besides all those other benefits, we have an ongoing stream of, of revenue, again, you know, I think, being fairly conservative, between 100,000 and maybe up to 150,000 a year, that is, that can be utilized to subsidize a portion of our park's maintenance operations. And right now, we do get 60,000 dollars approximately. I think we can greatly improve that as well as doing these other things. So, again, back to kind of what the primary question is, that's, that's the concept that I wanted to float past you, but the primary question first before you even got into that discussion is, is there, is there a will with the commission to, to continue to do this, to continue to operate the park? And I think if there is, we would like to go forth in, in doing something along these lines, because we feel like we're sort of spinning our wheels, like we're in the state of, we're, we're continuing to operate it, but it's just, it just sort of is what it is, and we can't really make any improvements without a plan to do so. So, with that, I just kind of want to throw that at you and see what you think.
With, with all of the improvements on our waterfront, that would be the only unimproved piece. Essentially, when John Storm and the McGlaughlin project is finished, it, it really will stick out like a dusty little plot. The question I had was, do, do travelers require an onsite host?
Pardon me?
Do we have an onsite host?
We have more than one. We have, we have volunteer, volunteer park hosts anywhere from-
And they're not paid?
Two to three at a time. They are not. It's kind of like this state parks host that-
Yeah, okay.
They get, in exchange for, for being a volunteer, they get a site with utility hookups. And then we ask them to monitor payments, help us with controlling people coming and going and, and, you know, basically following the rules, and then they also do some, some minor maintenance for us. They go around and, and pick up garbage and empty garbages and, and do some of those types of things, so, yeah.
Do we, do we know why the occupancy is so low? Is it, is it, is it because of the amenities, or is it because of advertising?
I, I would say mostly it's probably because of what it is.
Okay.
We've done-
It looks pretty-
We've done some advertising in the last couple of years, based on some, actually some conversations we had with the commission. We've done some other, other outreach. There isn't really-
We don't have a lot to advertise.
That's right. That's what I was going to say.
It's a location.
It's location.
Yeah, yeah.
It's location, but, but really, again, this is-
Pretty primitive.
This is the modern, this is the modern RV user, and what they're looking for is a lot more than what we have to offer right now. So, it, it wouldn't do a lot of, I don't think it would have a lot of great value for us to, to reach out, yeah.
Only thing we can really advertise with range, we can say a river runs through it.
Yeah, exactly. Rocky?
Which is a part of my question. How much does it cost to kind of reset and, and to deal with the high water? I mean, there's, there's, there's an expense, I'm sure, with electricity and replacing things every year maybe, or every other year, where-
It's pretty much just about every year. What we do is, we, we pretty much know almost on an annual basis that the park is going to flood, and we end up closing it down for some period of time during, during the winter season, and we are prepared for that every year. We probably spend-
Less than 5,000 bucks maybe a year.
Really?
What we, what we do is, we, we have to, we, we know well in advance when the waters are going to come up, and we call out our electrician and, and basically have them detach everything and unplug and, and turn all, all the services. And the park is made to flood, and those, if we did those types of improvements, it would be designed to flood.
Right, that's what I was going to say, that cost could go up possibly for cleanup and stuff, but-
Most definitely, but, but we do prepare for that. And then there's a cost to, to turn everything back on, and then Mr. Potter's crews typically come in, if, if it's been especially heavy year of flooding, there'll be some sediment that'll be left behind that we'll have to come back through with a, with one of our front loaders or whatever and move some, move some material around. But we, we prepare for that, and it's not a huge expense, but it is an anticipated.
Having spent a good portion of the last-
The weekend.
You, you need a RV down there, don't you, Rob?
I used to, early on, when I, when I started doing the festival, I used to stay in the park every night, and now I stay at the rivershore, so I'm at least close to the park, but not in it. This is, this is a, has great potential, I think, this, this little piece, and in terms of the festival and the other events that go on down there, it used to be that the carnival kind of set up in that area, and, and since that has changed during the festival weekend, we've, you know, utilized that a lot for vendors, and, you know, we have vendors that come in for the festival from out of state that spend the night there, and so I think, you know, I've seen it being utilized, and I see the potential that, that it has. And I actually spent, that was the first real walk that I had on the, on the path going from the RV park to the hotel over this weekend. That's a beautiful place. It's amazing, and if, if, if we can tie, you know, this piece back into it, you know, I, I think as a resident of Oregon City, like maybe all of us can speak for this, is other than the festival weekend and various other times throughout the year, I don't go down to Clackamas Park very much, and, and when I do, I realize how amazing that place is. It's a beautiful park, and so, I very much think that this is something that should stay and, and continue on, and I, I would hope that if this becomes an asset that really does generate more funds, that maybe we do look into the possibility of hiring, you know, a staff, you know, to, to do that, rather than rely on volunteers. But, I mean, the volunteers down there are also amazing, and the job that they do, so I, I definitely think this is something that we should-
Something else on that, as far as the staffing, just another thought that could be down the road a little bit more, but in terms of efficiency of what we would do there in staffing and that type of thing, is we're, we're pretty primitive in terms of how we run the operation. It's, it's volunteers, and it's a pay station box.
Right.
Pretty old-fashioned. If we were to make some investment down there and modernize and look, again, these types of, of users are, are very accustomed now to making reservations in advance. We don't have a reservation system right now. I think we might even look at something like an online automated reservation system. That might be a little further down the road as we get kind of more organized in that direction, but that actually kind of helps us in terms of limiting how much staff need to be there or whatever.
Sure.
But that's something that we've thought about as well, and, you know, and again, just bringing it up to that modern user type of feel.
What do you think the relationship is of the RV park with the John Storm dock? Do people bring boats? Did you say that, or that the RV people, it's not, they're not, they're not together on that?
They're not connected right now. I wouldn't say that one helps generate the other. Most of them who's using the John Storm Transit dock, the Columbia River yacht comes up, and I know they go over and spend the night at the hotel and use the rest of that, but I haven't heard of anybody particularly using John Storm dock, the RV. But you're kind of separate entities.
I think what we would see is if people- I think what we would see is, people coming to visit, they would walk up the new pathway that you were just talking about, Commissioner, walk towards the new McLaughlin Boulevard improvements that we're going to do, and then being able to access our downtown businesses. Because we're great, with the 99 improvements, obviously, we're greatly improving that access to downtown from the riverside of McLaughlin, and that whole, again, just the linkage continuation, all the way from the Clackamas River, the Cove, you know, all the way through Clackamas Park and south all the way to the new improvements.
That specific point brings up signage as well. I mean, I, I mean, if you were in the park, you would have no idea that there would ever be a connection to downtown, so hopefully that's-
We're working on that.
Move forward with things like this. We, I mean, if you were parking there and you knew that you could just walk right, that would be great.
Nancy Crushhour and I just had a conversation about that about a week ago, and we are developing a plan for some signage all through that whole network-
Right.
-that will actually hopefully install by the time the 99 project is done.
Wow.
Or shortly thereafter. We're working on that.
When you do that, take it all the way up through the promenade. Anyway.
Yes. Keep walking.
Yeah, keep walking. I'm glad that Daphne said what she did in terms of the John Storm Parks docks there. And I think it was, I think it was Alan Siff brought it up before in terms of the kind of recreational boat trips that are going down the Willamette and so forth, and now that we appear, it appears to be that we will have our locks operational, whether these boats can come down into the urban area. And I don't want to, I mean, I don't, I don't want to side rail this at all, but what I wanted to say is, I think we need a broader picture. And that broader picture could extend to the area south of this, which has a fair amount of open space in terms of tent facilities available to boaters that are coming down the system. I think you're not going to have a tie-in between the boats coming in there now and the RVs, because they're different, they're unlinked transportation systems. But people coming in that could spend the night in a tent off the river and so forth, I think that would be a great thing. And so I think you could have a broader picture of how that, the point is, if we're going to use this, if we're going to use this for overnight facilities, I think we need to broaden our picture as recreational users that would use an overnight facility, in terms of also tent users.
It's something, if I could come on in that real quick, we've, that used to be there, and-
Not well managed.
Not well managed, and it didn't attract the type of use that we were looking for.
That's true, but the point is, you, I mean, you could direct the service to those people that are coming down on boats.
Yeah, we would have to develop the-
The intention is not to, I've seen tents around our river in our city that are not part of a, are not part of an overnight thing. Saw some along the Clackamas, they disappeared within a couple of days of me seeing them, so I didn't even bother to report them. But the point is, that, yeah, people are going to come in and put in tents where they can, people that don't have housing that may have some tents. But I think it, I think it, I think something else could be done, specifically in terms of the link between boat users.
Jim?
Okay, I want to springboard off what Doug's discussion of the broader context, and I want to speak of it in a little different manner, as someone who spent a decade as a watershed planner. But first, I want to ask, just generally in this graphic, what is this, the road, the driveway says exit entrance, and over there, there's a space, and then it kind of looks like a home plate on the riverside of that, what I assume was a parking area or something? What is that area?
I think so. Isn't it that?
Oh, that's the-
It's the outfall. It's the outfall, yeah. There's a, it's a storm sewer outfall.
And then, what, Rocky alluded to it, but what is south of this, what is south of the RV park?
That's our, yeah, it's basically the, that's the undeveloped, mostly undeveloped open space that Commissioner Neely was just talking about.
Strip, essentially.
So it's actually connecting, right here is where our new pathway connects in. It goes south all the way to John Storm Park. A lot of that area is part of the development we did with the pathway and with John Storm Park. We actually did some restoration and re-vegetation, and that was part of our mitigation with the core for some of the in-water, in the high water work area that we did. So it's basically trees and then kind of open meadow and some waterway restoration that was done, but it's kind of a big open meadow area that's really pretty, actually.
Larry has something to add.
Just a little bit to add. To address, Doug, about this other-
Can you move a little bit closer to the mic there? Or move the mic closer to you?
About the southern part of the park. I would not think about putting tents in there, just from the problem we've had. It would be kind of neat if we had a few maybe for the hiker-biker combo. The state parks and some of the private parks have been leaning towards the years, and they're making a very good revenue stream, and those are portable. So if you brought in five, six portable years, set up established pads and took them out during the storm season, I mean, the revenue stream, and I've thought about, you know, again, we have to go to land use planning, and we have to be very careful about how much of an imprint we put up there, footprint we put up there. But actually, with these portable years, I think that would be a real good possibility as maybe provide some tent sites, but I think the portable years would be perfect, because actually, they sit up on a, more of a higher elevation, and they've got a better view of the river.
People live in rolling all day, they don't have to do the work and setting up the-
Or they don't have to bring their equipment.
For you who have camped at Cape Lookout, you can't drive to the cabins there. You actually have to park, and you actually walk into the cabins, and we could have the same kind of thing as where you have walking paths to the years.
You bet.
And South Park, State Park, and so like that also. So that would be, be a real good-
It'd be a great one in front of amenities, and also keep usage there.
It could certainly help us manage that.
Well, most rivers, even large rivers like the Willamette, before human settlement or European settlement, were typically, on either side, part of the riparian ecosystem would have been riparian wetlands. And we've destroyed those. In fact, it's been said that the nineteen ninety-three floods in the Mississippi Basin were caused in large part by the century of filling of riparian wetlands that took away flood storage. I, given the low part, given that this is so low adjacent to the Willamette, I would almost guarantee that, you know, before European settlement, there were probably some type of, you know, wetlands connected, floodplain wetlands connected to this.
I'm not sure if that is accurate. If you study the Clackamas River per se, it's more in a canyon, and you're in a hardscape coming all the way down the river. I mean, it's very well-defined, you've got high rocks, you've got cliffs, and actually, two hundred years ago, the river actually was coming out through the middle of the Oregon City Shopping Center. And so there might have been somewhat of a floodplain, but I'm not exactly sure.
If you look at old maps, and I mentioned that one that I've seen with the Native American Village on it, those, the southeast whole quadrant of the confluence-
Was a big floodplain.
Was referred, was called the Clackamas Bottomlands. It was basically one humongous wetlands complex that's just been, you know, destroyed over the past hundred years. But what I would like to see if we could explore, as maybe a further enhancement on this idea, is somewhere either south or north of the RV park itself, seeing if there would be the space to design, and landscape architects are really good at this, whether we could excavate a constructed wetland with a connection to the Willamette River, that, you know, as the river rose and fell, it would inundate and provide habitat, maybe fish rearing even. And I, and it, you know, I don't, I could, I think that could only enhance the experience of that Clackamas Park and south area if there was some, you know, enhanced enhancement of the ecology by wetland creation. And I'm wondering if the commission would be interested in exploring that.
I mean, conceivably, if you look at, you might even be able to draw a wetland onto the, under the part of the-
Like here?
Yeah, even around, even around between 99E and the parking area, and even into this area here.
I've talked of planning about this already, and part of our mitigation, we would have to have some type of, not a riparian area, but someplace for this to drain to, because right now, it's a hard service now, and it drains into the river. So if we do more improvements, we would still be required to do some type of mitigation around this site also. And it could include the tent area, old tent area too. So, yeah, definitely, we're going to be doing improvements all around the site, otherwise it won't be allowed by planning either.
And I think he's right. I think it'd be more than just a stormwater mitigation, I think it could be a-
I'm talking about a full wetland that has, you know, connectivity to the river itself for inundation.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know if Clackamas Park is large enough to accommodate it.
We could, we could take a look at that.
Appreciate that.
Okay, anything else on this? You have all the direction that you need.
Thanks, Scott.
Enthusiastic response.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Next, the last thing is the extraordinary high water line. It was Jim's issue.
Yes. I wanted to just give folks an update on where my own inquiries on this over the past couple of days have gone. Right now-
What's that?
Right now, I guess, the Army Corps of Engineers, Agent James Holmes, will be receiving a revised packet of information for a jurisdictional determination of how high the ordinary high watermark is in the Cove area. And just to remind folks, the way this issue got raised to me by some citizens was the discrepancy there was from, between the published information on the ordinary high watermark at the Willamette River, which was twenty-three or twenty-four feet at the mouth of the Clackamas River, and the delineation, as it was in the land use application, which was eighteen feet within the Cove, and that the ordinary high watermark generally rises as you go upstream, just because of physics. And the discrepancy of, you know, five and six feet was significant, and I've gotten a bit of an education on ordinary high watermark. One thing I have learned from Mr. Holmes and from Mike McCabe at DSL is that, in fact, on the Clackamas, the ordinary high watermark can be higher than within the Cove, because the rapids and the wave energy and can scour to a greater extent than the calm waters within the Cove, which I thought was interesting. So that is, one thing that Mr. McCabe indicated was that the last delineation had been done in 2003, and so a new one was necessary, and that was confusing to me, because the one in the Cove report said it was 2006. Do you have any background on that, Dan, as to what? My understanding was it was 2006. Okay.
That was with the Cove's engineers did that one, and I think that's what they're trying to get some verification from Mr. Holmes at this point, which they're supposed to have later on this one.
Okay. So I, the question that arose in my mind was actually, so what? What's the significance of this? I mean, if it's, if it's, you know, eighteen or twenty-three or twenty, the ordinary high watermark is a delineation used by the Army Corps of Engineers to determine its jurisdiction for regulatory purposes, basically whether Clean Water Act 404 permit is necessarily, and typically those are for dredge fill removal permits. As a federal permit, a 404 permit will typically trigger other reviews that can range from, you know, the National Historic Preservation Act for Native American artifacts to the Endangered Species Acts for, you know, impacts on birds or fish, et cetera. And as I got to thinking about this in more detail, I just started thinking, okay, so a 404 permit's needed, what are the values that we are trying to protect with, you know, any 404 permit, you know, whether or not we apply for a 404 permit? And I went back and started reviewing the plan set and some of the reports in there, and the issue seems to me to be, as far as what the citizens that I've been working with are concerned about, is the extent of the tree removal on the rim of the Cove, the wall of cottonwoods, as it were, because of the shade that the tree cover provides to the Cove, and the effect of temperature on habitat within the Cove, because it is a habitat for migrating salmon, small salmon. It's a refuge there, and it has apparently been designating, designated as essential salmonid habitat. And the concern is that all the tree removal on the south side and the east side, where the condominium units would be built, would let the bare sunshine directly onto the water and increase the temperature. When I went over to see Lynn today, Charlotte Lehan actually gave me this, which is some scientific studies on the effect of shading and other issues on, you know, fish habitat. So, you know, I've kind of moved this week, in the past week and a half or two, about, you know, there's this discrepancy over the ordinary high watermark. So what? You know, do we have to get a 404 permit? Maybe, but I think when it comes down to it, it's, you know, going to building a sustainable future. What is the impact of this tree removal on the ecosystem, and have we, have we made that evaluation? And should we? And the reason I had asked folks to bring their packages is, I wanted to take a look with you at the Water Quality Resource Report that was done, because we have, we have a Water Resource Area Code provision within our code that does, if I can find it, does have as its purpose, amongst other things, protection of water quality for fish habitat, amongst other things. And in the code, temperature is mentioned as an issue. What I did notice, I mean, it requires a good analysis, and I couldn't find an analysis in this document regarding the impact of the tree removal and the grading that I understand for cut-fill balance purposes is driving the tree removal. And I wanted to get some background on how that question has been considered, and whether alternatives have been considered, and what the commission feels about the extent of tree removal and what alternatives might exist. Again, since I'm new on the commission, I don't know to what extent this has been discussed prior to my, you know, being on the commission, and I just wanted to, you know, have a discussion about that.
Doug?
Yeah. I think your concerns are valid. I guess the question- I guess the question I would end up asking is the mitigation efforts that go with this. And the, what I think is, in terms of the design, a broader riparian area produced as part of this mitigation effort in terms of removing the soils and silver and the, and the plantings that occur there, with the long-term benefit of the mitigation effort be more beneficial to what's there at the moment. If you get out of that, if you get out of that steep slopes area, you don't see much growing. And even, even before we were doing things, you didn't see much growing. And I think it's just because that whole surface in that flat area is basically a desert because of what's been done there before. I'm inclined to agree, you may have some short-term negative effects on, on the cove. And the question to me, and I don't know the answer to the question, was whether the mitigation efforts there improve the long-term habitat that would, that would be there compared to what is currently there. I guess that would be the question I would pose.
Didn't we have a presentation by the developers very early talking about, have that restoration?
Yeah.
This would be a question to ask them before we can bring it back and have that conversation.
I'd like to extend that conversation beyond the developers. I'd like to ask someone from, say, NOAA Fisheries or the Fish and Wildlife Services on, because, where's that, that document? I, I'm no expert on what, you know, salmon need for shading. I don't have an answer, for example, on how long it's going to take, given the mitigation that's planned in the cove development, to reach the height and the thickness as a building wall, you know, to, to block the sunlight. I mean, there's just the questions that I don't know. I mean, it could be that even with the tree removal at 100%, you know, the temperature in the cove would never rise to a, a temperature that would endanger the salmon. I don't know that.
Yeah.
But I don't, that, that wall of cottonwoods is pretty high, and you're not going to get that type of height for shading anytime soon.
That's right.
And if, if the, if the wall of shading is, is removed, and it takes, say, 15 years for mitigation to provide something similar, could that 15 years of extra temperature be catastrophic for the ecology? Again, I, I don't know any of these answers, but I don't think that this Water Quality Sources Report answered that question.
Let me, let me say, I'm sure that the cove functions in a very, I know a little bit about fisheries, and I think it functions in a very short term as, as any kind of cold water refuge. In fact, I'm not sure it serves as a cold water refuge at all, because there's a lot of panfish that the, actually, the panfish fishers are concerned about, a little less concerned about the smolt. I think it is, I think it is a rearing habitat that they come into in the, in the late spring and so forth, before the waters ever warm up, and then, and then they're gone. I doubt that it's a cool water refuge, because I don't think there's any cool water that's coming into the system. But I think we need other expertise on that.
We actually met with Fish and Wildlife on Monday, and they said the same thing.
It's not a cold water refuge.
Correct. And it's, the only fish in there, for the most part, are panfish.
Yeah. You got, you got that season. And, and I don't know if I might, I don't know what part, you know, you see tremendous amount of small, small, smolt jumping in, in there early on. I, I don't know for myself whether those are the steelhead that are being released into there by the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, or whether they're fish entering. I assume smol are, in fact, entering in there to feed. I don't question that.
We had a full report on the numbers of different species in the cove, too. I can't remember whether it was this project or whether we were talking about dredging, but I'm sure we have that in our record.
Well, I remember, actually, somebody from, it was like some organization, like Bass, Bass Unlimited or something, testified.
Came and talked to us, yeah.
About the importance of, as a, more of a worm water.
You said Fish and Wildlife told you there aren't salmon in the cove?
They said it was primarily a worm.
Primarily?
It's not a cold water refuge.
Right.
It's, it's an area where they, as they're coming through the system, they'll come in there and feed, but the, the temperature has not yet become an issue.
That's part of the, that's part of the reason why it's called salmon habitat.
That's right. But what I'm saying, you've got, as you get into June and July, the waters begin to warm up, and they're lethal to fish. Now, these smol will look for cold water refuges on their migration out. If they, if they experience extended periods of times of 70 degrees, extended periods, you know, a couple of days, they're dead. But they can find springs and so forth along their route. I doubt that the cove provides the cold water refuges they need during that part. I don't think it makes any difference in April, early June, when you see all the fish jumping in there, April into early June. I don't think that temperature is becoming an issue. It's in the July and August time period, but I doubt very much whether smol are moving into that period, into there for a cold water refuge at that time. There's no question in my mind in their major migration that they're moving in there to feed, but I don't think it's a cold water refuge that's, it's attracting them. I think it's a place to find food.
If they're interested?
But I think, I think we should have somebody besides the developer to come in here and talk to us about this very issue, whether it's a person from the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife or, or U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
I'll make two, two comments. One was the, any, anything to do with mitigation that's above the ordinary high watermark is addressed through our Water Resource Permit. And part of the mitigation was the fact that they're sloping those, those banks to a three to one instead of the steep slopes that they are now. So in terms of water quality, not only will you have a, a shallower slope, which is good for water quality, but you have a wider vegetative corridor than we have now. So at, at least from the staff's perception and review, and also the biologists that the applicant usually felt that it would be a net, net improvement.
The, the, the shallower slopes combined with the removal of, you know, 50 feet high cottonwood trees, I think would be a negative as far as shading. The question is, how important is shading? And I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, no, I think you get some shading as part of the mitigation, too. Not only is it wider, but you're, you're, they're also planting, planting trees. So, you know, that's the one.
Again, it's, the trees aren't going to be 50 feet high.
I, I think we should have professionals come in and talk to us.
I think, I think to have that as a topic that we study to, you know, for, for our next work session would be, but it is a very interesting part of the commission.
I'm wondering if the, if the discussion should be at the next work session or at the urban renewal retreat?
I think the urban renewal retreat would be an ideal place for it.
Because I think...
I don't want to get anybody knocked away. Excuse me, let me rephrase it. No, let me rephrase it. Let me say that it's at a, it is, it is a, it is at a work session that involves the urban renewal agency. And I think that's what you're really at.
Because the urban renewable commissioners should be in on this discussion.
I, I think so, too.
There you go.
We can arrange that. We'll have to see what the time is. I think what would also be advantageous, because we, I mean, every day it's a new issue when it comes to the cove. If we could get all the issues on the table to determine whether we really want to do this or not, because we are spinning our wheels, and today we're answering this question, tomorrow we're answering this question.
That's right.
It's really time whether we either want to do it or we don't. And we need to get all those issues on the table, and then as a group, we need to agree, and we need to move on and do it, or we need to go in a different direction. Now, part of that will come up with discussion at the retreat.
I'd like, I'd like to make a point, though, in terms of what you're saying. A lot of the major efforts made in fish habitat efforts in terms of loss, loss of spawning habitats, loss of rearing habitats throughout the Columbia Basin are long-term fixes. The fact that you might take something away and you don't get a replacement for 15 or 20 years is not really the issue. The issue is, are you going to produce something that's a viable habitat over the long term? So your 15-year thing really, unless, unless it had a tremendous shading impact, I don't think would be a major concern for me. It's a longer-term thing that becomes a major concern to me. The fish, we, we have to help contribute to the solution, but the cove isn't going to be the solution to fish being on our endangered species list.
At the end of the urban renewal retreat, you'll hopefully set an agenda, things to talk about, and that could certainly be on the future. We can't organize it by Friday.
Well, we'll see if we can find anyone by then, but that seemed like it's a short straw for...
Of course, one of the things we're dealing with, too, is transition here in the cove.
Oh, yeah.
And so hitting everybody's, it's the same approach, we've been, we've been living it for quite a few years. And it's probably good for us to be refreshed as well, because we haven't heard those things for a while.
So, so what's the ultimate direction we're taking on this?
We'll, we'll arrange to get some folks to address the issues that you're concerned about.
From the agencies.
I'd like Ben Meyer of NOAA Fisheries to be one of them.
Who?
Ben Meyer of NOAA Fisheries.
Without, I mean, without saying who should be there, it's probably best to have the agency make the decision, as you were saying, without any recommendation from ourselves. Otherwise, you might end up getting into cross purposes with the agency itself. And I, I think, I think it's important that we, we don't determine the person that the agency sends.
They want to choose our consultants.
If he's a person that's involved in that space, he might be the person he sends. But I don't, I don't want to get into, to, to doing that. That's the agency's decision.
Okay. City manager's report.
I do have one other issue I need to mention, mainly because it just, the issue is a bonus, and I really haven't had time to get to it, but I know they're looking for some direction. And that has to do with Willamette Falls TV. And they had come a couple of meetings ago, I think it was either your last work session or one before, and gave you a little bit of the work they're involved in. I was hoping they'd get a little bit more into the issue that they're faced with and asked you for where you wanted them to go, but they didn't really get to that. So let me give you a brief history and then kind of talk about the issue that, that we're faced with. At least in the brief history that I've been here, Willamette Falls TV was funded traditionally by the three cities, Westland, Gladstone, and Oregon City. And that has been funded by a portion of the franchise fees that we receive from Comcast. About two years ago, Gladstone pulled out of that arrangement.
Longer ago than that.
Time flies when you're having fun. I suppose it was.
Yeah.
It was longer ago than that.
It's four years.
Four years ago. Because I, and I think they just had some questions about the service they were receiving. It's, it's my understanding that Westland is going to be pulling out as well. I think they're going to give Willamette Falls a year. I think they feel that they could contract for those services and save themselves some dollars. In regards from an Oregon City perspective, basically what we pay is 32% of the franchise fees, and this year that's budgeted, that's about $60,000. Now, you'll find some additional money, and I think we've got budgeted $85,000, but there's some other costs in terms of equipment, things of that nature that's been looked at. And I assume, then, that Willamette Falls also benefits from contracts with other agencies or other groups that are looking for types of services. This bank head has looked at that a little bit, just under their cost for services, and if we did decide to opt out of this arrangement, it appears that we could probably save some money in regards to contracting for same services. But again, if everybody does that, I would suspect that Willamette Falls is going to have to increase her rate, so it's pretty hard to kind of calculate exactly what that is. We've also, because of this concern, I know that Ms. Ashford has asked us or talked with us about what other things they might be able to provide for us, because, again, as you know, Willamette Falls is talking about moving to a new location without Oregon City, and particularly if Westland does pull out, is they're kind of in a lurch, and they need some decisions about what the long-term future holds with Oregon City. Definitely today, with web streaming and everything else, there is a lot of different alternatives that we can do, but it is cable access. There are other folks who use that service, and that's a community benefit, even beyond what, what we provide. Of course, if you weren't on cable TV for some reason doing that, that's going to be a downside, too, so you're going to have to weigh all that, even though, you know, we broadcast it in other ways. But they're looking for kind of some indication of where we may be going, going. I, I've told Ms. Ashford that we wouldn't make any decisions this year, but we would look at the issue, and it might be down, down the road. But, you know, I can get you some more information on that, but I know they're very anxious about what is Oregon City's position on that.
Why does our position need to be any different than Westland's?
I don't know that it does.
Yeah, because Westland, I...
Other than, they're located in Oregon City, and of course, the arrangements are here.
Because there could be the possibility of us working out a partnership with Westland in some way. I'm not sure what that could be, but, and they may be using a longer trial period.
Yeah. Now... Yeah, there are, there are some other things that we could talk with them about doing for us. I know there's been concerns about whether, how the money's being used, and one of the things we're exploring is, is whether we could actually do the books for them. So, I mean, what we could do, I suppose, too, I mean, one would be to do something with Westland, do it on our own, that does increase some staff costs, us in trying to figure all this out, move in that direction. The other thing we could do is, is just sit down with them and kind of redefine this relationship and what the cost of it is as well.
Well, if Westland's pulling out, I think we need to do that. And, I mean, I think, I think it would be nice to have an agreement that talks specifically about the services that we expect from each other.
Yeah. If, also, if Westland pulls out, the board will become strictly an appointment from Oregon City. Versus, I think you have equal numbers...
It's half from Oregon City and half from Westland.
Yeah.
I don't have cable. I'm going to keep it that way. Anyway. The, I guess, the question is, do, do we have issues with their service? And if that's the case, I'd like to hear about that.
I don't know if we have any new issues other than what we've had in the past. I think it really is a question of cost. It appears that if we went a different direction, it probably would be, I mean, we could probably do it cheaper than what we're doing it today, but that's kind of an unknown, too, and it really depends on what it is we want to do. What we may be able to do is get additional services, even though with the technology we have today, there's lots of different ways to do what's being done, and maybe a cheaper way.
Yeah, we have the capability, just like Westland does, they say, Willamette Falls TV said, you know, we have the capability here of doing our own programming, just like Westland does.
And where would it go?
And we're going to be in a different place.
Where would it go through?
The major thing that we can...
Go through the, yeah, I'm not sure where it goes.
Well, the major thing that we do today, it's not the only thing, is, of course, commission meetings, which are now video streamed, so you don't...
Planning commission.
Planning commission, which we also...
Isn't that video streamed?
Yeah, we, and, well, you're being video streamed in the scene. So we're video streaming about everything. You don't really have to go through cable access TV any longer. Now, there are some folks who do not have computers, so therefore, they, they look at that. There are a few other things they've done for us. Of course, they do the state of the city, they did the ceremony we had up at the elevator, those sorts of things.
Special events.
We can do any special programming that we want to do. We could do all that by contract, yeah. I mean, those are...
So what I'm hearing is, is those two things, not a few, because we're regularly on cable
TV, but is it worth $85,000 a year? Gee, you could have a, a new neighborhood coordinator or public relations person on staff for...
Well, now, this is, I mean, there's a limitation, which you, well...
Is that what you're saying? It costs us $85,000 a year? Or we budget $85,000?
It's 32% of the franchise you're getting out of Comcast right now, and you're getting roughly about $190,000, so 32,000, about $60-something thousand dollars going into this, yeah.
I'm not saying either way here. I'm just, is that, am I analyzing it correctly?
I, I think it's difficult to analyze without having some numbers to look at.
And that's what I'm struggling with. I mean, how do you put this thing together?
Well, see, I think that's why I would like the, the, can we study it for a, a year?
Yeah, well, we don't have to do it today.
And see what Westland's doing, see what the other partners are, because I believe that some other cities now are, are, I mean, if, if we, if we would pull out, it's my understanding that Milwaukee and some other communities then would probably help form the board, and they would still begin, still do that.
Okay. I can pass it on to Mel, I mean, that's what she's needing, just where we at. And I didn't want to make that call myself.
I'm not interested in making a change now, because I don't think I have enough information to do...
And I would be kind, I don't know how you do it, how you, how you do the survey, survey to find out where people in fact get that kind of information off the, off the computer web stream, what percentage, get it off the cable. I mean, I, I have no idea.
I mean, I think it was really, yeah, I think it was really, I mean, we went from I mean, I think it was really, yeah, I think it was really, I mean, we went from a, from a daily newspaper in Oregon City to now the weekly. We went from the monthly trail news now to the quarterly. And so I, I hate to give up any of our communication aspects because it's so hard to communicate.
And I'm amazed at the number of people that have talked to me and talked to, and talked to me about seeing more cable.
I couldn't sleep last night until I went to get some milk, and there you were.
Yep.
We're, we're the cure to some people's insomnia.
Oh, boy.
Some people even go to the links to attend meetings.
Amazing. Isn't that amazing? Ah, they just want to see more cable. Well, I think, I'm, I'm definitely with, with Daphne that if we could save the money, but I don't think we know enough right now.
No, we don't know enough.
Okay. Can I bring up one more matter? And I forgot to earlier. And it's actually for Chief Conrad, because I got a call today from Thor Wegner, who discussed the fact that he saw on TV a story about the Lake Oswego Police Department regularly ticketing people for driving by when people are just about to enter a crosswalk or, or a few steps into the crosswalk, where cars don't stop. Lake Oswego is just like hammering on them now. And Thor made the point that he lives, especially in the hilltop area, he finds that Oregon City drivers are really, really bad about that, and wanted to see, or he wanted someone to inquire with the police department as to, is that something that we regularly ticket for? And if not, can we start?
I'm watching too.
That's just, and that's a fairly new regulation, isn't it? Just last.
No, there's, that, that law's been on the books for quite a long time, as far as motorists are required to yield to pedestrians who are about to enter the roadway. In answer to your question, Commissioner, I don't know off the top of my head how many citations we've issued in, say, in the past year or so in regards to that, but what I would encourage is when you have your constituents call you about a specific problem, is to get ahold of me, and I can discuss it with them, address it, and then maybe dedicate some resources towards those specific problem areas.
I just thought, though, I, it's my understanding that the last legislative session, or maybe it was two ago, I can't remember, but that, that now we have to wait till the person totally is out of the crosswalk. Isn't that the new one?
No, they changed it to be less restrictive. They, they took it back because it's over-restricted.
They've confused the issue.
Tell me what it is exactly.
As far as, you're leading to pedestrians?
Yes.
When a pedestrian is standing on the sidewalk and trying to enter the roadway, the motorist is required to stop and let them enter the roadway.
For how long?
I'm not following.
Well, okay, do I have to?
Until, until they're completely across the intersection.
Completely across?
No, that got pulled back. That got pulled by.
You've got to be, you've got to be about, about three-quarters of the way across the, now. There's, but, see, this is part of the issue, because they've.
We need to have that clarified.
They've screwed around this thing so much, I don't think anybody knows what the.
I think, I think it's very confusing.
It must be similar to the old school speed zone, where nobody actually knew what was going on, because I think we have about five different opinions here and down. I, I will find out for sure and give you the specific answer next time I see you.
I think that would be good at a commission meeting, so.
Let me, let me, let me give you a couple of things, too, because this, I've had a number of folks mention this, and I find it somewhat difficult, too, particularly on the hilltop, as you go down Malala. We have a number of bus stops right at intersections, and we have a person standing there, you don't know whether they're trying to cross or whether they're at the bus stop, which has created many a near rear-end accident.
Right.
You also, for some reason, in the evening, I've noticed, and I, I don't know if it's a design issue, or maybe it's just my highs are getting bad, but I've had other folks come in on, too, when you're going down Malala or coming up, particularly there by grocery outlet, but the one further down, many times it's very difficult in the late evening when it's getting darker to pick that pedestrian up and score across.
See people.
It's, it's really a hazardous situation. But I don't know what, I don't know what the issue, maybe it needs more lighting there. I, I just don't know.
Black clothing. Okay. You got the manual there? Oh, funny.
I just wanted to say, Thor also called me, and I queried him a little bit on the kinds of intersections he was talking about. He was actually talking about signalized intersections, where he had a walk light, and people were, were making a right turn onto the intersection, and he had to jump back, that, that's even at the signalized intersections, that there, that there was an issue for him. But he was, I guess that program also focused on them dramatically increasing the fines they were charging for that particular thing. I think it'd be nice to know what, what we have on our books in terms of fines that we charge for these kinds of misdemeanors.
You also had a number of, so that's, Lake Oswego's only one of many that's, that has actually had either some grant funding or a special program geared towards pedestrian safety, so that's why they've done grant.
Okay. Before we.
You're a smart numbskull.
Seeing no more business to come before us, we are adjourned.